Good evening, everyone. The time is now five P M. And we will start the Monday, August seventh, twenty twenty-three Community Development Committee. Time is five P M. Can I get a roll call, please?
Alderman Hayes. Alderman Newsom. Present. Alderman Donenworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from, um, July third, twenty twenty-three Community Development Committee?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Donenworth.
Second.
Second by Alderman Turner. Are there any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item two, we have a public hearing. Item A, C D B G amendments to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-three action plans. Um, I will open up the pub- motion to open up the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Turner.
Second.
Second by Alderman Florian. Although, roll call.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Donenworth.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, we have, um, Larissa Garland.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Larissa Garland, the director of, um, C D B G. And I'm here tonight to go over the twenty nineteen amendment of the action plan and the twenty, the twenty twenty-three amendment, um, for the action plan. Um, in twenty nineteen, as we all know, we had, um, we received COVID money from the federal government. And throughout the process, throughout the years, I put the COVID money into different programs, which consisted of being in program year, the action plan for program year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. After speaking to HUD, he indicated that I needed to, um, make the amendment and put the funding back into program year twenty nineteen. Because technically, the, that's where the COVID money came in, that account is still open. So they want us to put it back there to be able to record any funding that we have coming out of there. So in an effort to be able to do that, we're doing the amendment and putting the, the remaining funding back into the program year for, um, twenty nineteen. So, and we have, uh, two programs that we are funding out of that. Um, we have the small business grant program, startup grant program, and then we also have the CARES X Small Business Grant Program. So we're putting that money back into that funding in program year twenty nineteen, and I need to do an amendment because I technically had it in the two different action plans. So we're putting it back into that year. So that's the purpose of the amendment for that funding. And we will be using it to give, um, small business, walkie-in businesses, um, who were impacted by COVID. We would be giving them a grant of up to twenty-five thousand dollars if they have, uh, income eligible businesses and they have to approve that they were affected by COVID nineteen. So, um, we're doing that. We've been getting a lot of new applications, a lot for the startup. We've been getting both, but a lot for the startup. So we've been getting a lot of inquiry and applications for that. So that's the twenty nineteen amendment. The amount, um, is for, um, three hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars and thirty-five cent. Yes. Mm-hmm. So I don't know if there was any questions for the twenty nineteen.
Um, so you said you're getting a lot of applications. How are you getting the word out that this money is still available? Cause I think a lot of people think, you know, COVID money is over, right?
Yeah, um, well, we actually, we, of course, we're doing it on websites. We've been at, uh, various community events throughout the community, so we let them know about the program there. Um, and that's based, uh, you know, on social media, website, and then in the local community. Like, we were at the fair the following Friday, we had it there. We had information about it there. We were at the library, we had information about there. Actually, when I met with a group of women on the Saturday and explained the program and what we offered there. And so just being different places in the community and, like I said before.
Are you asking people where they found out about it? So we can find out what works best?
Um. No, I haven't. No, I have, I haven't asked.
Well, it's not too late, right?
No, it's not too late. The money is still available. It's first.
Uh, to ask them even.
Oh, sure, sure.
As you go through the process with them, you could say, hey, how did you find out about this? And then going forward, we might know a little bit better about what ways to get the word out about stuff.
Right. Well, I know a lot of people, I mean, just from in conversations, I haven't asked them where they got it from, just in conversation. A lot of it has been, um, on the website. And then I know we put it out with the newsletter, so a lot of people seen it there. Um, I know it's other organizations who are kind of passing it off as their program. So, um, we, so a lot of people are hearing about it through, I think, social media.
And it's only for-profit businesses that can do it?
Yes. And you have to be walkie-in, walkie-in only.
Okay, thank you.
Um, if I may.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you. Are there any restrictions or on types of businesses that this money is made available for?
Well, well, like she said, it has to be a for-profit. Um, it has to, it has to make sense. Um, of course, it has to be walkie-in.
Yeah.
Um.
Doesn't it have to be related to retaining employees, too?
That, that's one of the requir-
What was that now?
That's one of the requirements, retention.
Retaining employees.
We're either retaining employees or job creation is one of them. Another thing, the, the owner must, um, make a certain amount of money in order to be able to qualify for it. And if they make too much money, then the people that they employ would need to fall within our income guidelines to be able to qualify for it. So we've, I mean, we've had a, yeah, we funded everything from a flower shop to a nightclub. So it just depends on what it is, if they have the documentation, if they qualify, if they can prove that they, um, created jobs or job creation or retention. You know, that's, that's what we're looking for. So we need the numbers to be able to explain to HUD the goals that we're trying to meet. And that's about economic development, job creation, and retention.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Were you finished with the, you were gonna go to twenty nineteen?
So if anybody-
Is there anyone from the audience, um, have any questions about the twenty nineteen amendment? Or comments? Okay, you can go ahead.
Okay. So for, the next one is for the amendment to the twenty twenty-three program year, um, annual action plan. So what we did, we have money left over from program year twenty twenty-two, so we rolled it over into twenty twenty-three. And so I provided, um, a table of what we did. So with the lead line replacement program, we had, um, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars left over. So that was carried over into the new program year. In addition to that, we had money available for the sidewalk program in which, um, we didn't get an opportunity to complete that program. So because of that, we took that two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and re-rolled it into the lead line replacement program for program year twenty twenty-three. So that gives it a total of, from us, um, the total for that program would be, um, six hundred twelve thousand, I'm sorry, six hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars. That would be available for the lead line replacement program throughout the community that you guys see going on throughout the community. So we have, we put that money into that program.
So you, you took? I'm missing, I, I'm not clear on that. Did you take money from the sidewalk program?
Yes, from twen- from program year twenty twenty-two.
Uh-huh.
We took that money.
Right.
And rolled it into the lead line replacement program for program year twenty twenty-three.
Cool, thanks.
Okay. So then we also had our beach accessibility project, which went really well. It's going really well. Um, so we, um, started that in program year twenty twenty-two. So we had an additional, like, fifteen thousand dollars left over. So we just took that money and rolled it over into the new beach accessibility program, um, for program year twenty twenty-three, which gave us sixty-five thousand, ten dollars toward that program.
I just wanna say, if I may, that I went, I've been down in the beach and that wheelchair accessibility pad, or what's it, what's it called?
It's a ramp.
It's ramp. What color is that? That's aw- that is awesome. And then with the new, uh, free rental of the beach, beach wheelchairs for access, this, this is really, I'm really proud of what Walkie is doing with, uh, Lisa May and what you were working with her, so, good job.
Thank you. And then the next one is, um, the facade program. We had a facade program last year for program year twenty twenty-two. Um, we were, we have been having some issues with the consultants that we're working with. So that program is kind of being revamped. However, we do still have one business that we've been working with consistently. So we are going to complete that business. And then the money that's left over is going to be rolled into program year twenty twenty-three. We're gonna put those funds into, we kind of dropped that portion into like a pot that we just distributed throughout to different pro- to different programs for program year twenty twenty-three.
What's the facade program?
We would actually for, so we, when we started, we wanted to do the Washington corridor in between Butrick and Noel's. What's that street right next to the shoe, First Shoe?
Maple.
Maple. So in between there on Washington Street.
Yeah.
On both sides of the street, we wanted to do the facade, so just the front facing of the building to do rehabs to those. So we got a couple of people who were interested in, in doing it, and we worked with the consultants. We got renderings and how everything would look and all of that. So we have been working with the business owners. Uh, one of the people we're further along with, and so we're gonna deal with them and do that facade. And then we're kind of, gonna go back to the drawing board with the program and, and, uh, represent it.
Cool.
For, um, next year, so. So because of that, we took the extra money, which was approximately two hundred, two hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars, and so we reallocated that money.
Outstanding.
So a portion of that, however, will go to that existing facade that we're working with. We don't know the total because we still have to put it out for bid, so. And then the last thing was our housing rehabilitation program. We had a hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars that we carried over from program year twenty twenty-two into the new housing rehab program, um, which gives us a total of four hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars for the twenty twenty-three program year, um, housing rehabilitation program. So that would be the total amendment.
I have a question.
Okay.
Do we have any homes waiting for that, um, program?
Absolutely.
How many?
Over a hundred.
Ooh, okay.
Over a hundred.
Do you track that by, by Ward? Do you have a list of?
I do. Not sure I can by Ward. No, and please don't ask me to do it because you're giving me more work to do.
Do me a favor and track that by Ward, please?
No, I don't have time, no.
Alderman Florian.
Um, so, I, I, the carryovers, I understand, but how, is there a limit to how much you can carry over?
No.
You can-
There is no limit.
Interesting. So if you did nothing in twenty twenty-two, you could just carry everything over to twenty twenty-three?
You could.
That doesn't seem like something our government would normally allow. That's weird.
The government would allow us to carry it over, however, they're gonna be like, okay, why didn't you not do anything?
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely, they would question that, but yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Do the aldermen have any more questions?
And so what I'm, what I'm asking for, so this is, um, has been advertised, it's on display, it's available. And so people have an opportunity to comment here today, as well as they can also write in email, drop a letter, all those things to be able to comment on this. And after the thirty days, which would be August twenty-fourth, um, then we will be submitting it to HUD formally. But I would need an approval, I'm asking for an approval from council on August twenty-first. So the next, uh, the next council meeting, I'm asking for an approval of these, of this amendment, and that's it.
So we don't need to vote on that?
Not tonight, no, next.
Not tonight, okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great job, as usual.
Thank you.
Uh, can I get a motion to close the, um, hearing?
Motion, close the hearing?
Motion by Alderman Turner.
Second.
Second by Alderman Donenworth. Roll call.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Donenworth.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, item three, uh, audience time. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on anything that is on the Community Development Committee agenda? All right, hearing done. We're gonna go on with our meeting. Item, uh, four. No O B, no, yeah, we do have O business. Item A, resolution approving a lease agreement with Walkie and Chamber of Commerce for office space at one hundred North Martin Luther King Junior Avenue. Can I get a motion on the floor? No motion?
So Alderman, in case you couldn't hear me, it would fail for lack of motion.
So this will still go to the full council?
Um, yes, it'll go forward, but it will-
Okay.
Go forward with a negative recommendation.
Okay.
Hey Kelly, can I ask you a question?
Alderman Turner.
Thank you, ma'am. It's just out of curiosity, so. So when I'm watching the news and watching like C-SPAN and, and Congress and, and state government, and they have committees, I'm just asking for clarification or whatever. When, when something in those committees doesn't make it out of committee, it just dies. They say it dies in committee, but that doesn't happen here.
No, because you, uh, Walkie doesn't have a specific codified rule for that. So if you could codify a rule for that, then, then it would die in committee.
I thought that was part of Robert's Rule of Waters, but no.
No, I mean, in this instance, it would just go forward, um, with a negative recommendation, and then we would let the council know that it didn't, didn't make it out of committee, really.
All right, thanks.
All right, item, um, new business. Item A. An ordinance approving zoning calendar number twenty-seven nineteen, a map amendment rezoned for twenty-two, twenty-six North Northern Avenue from C R, conservation, recreation, agriculture, to R one, single-family residence. Can I get a motion on the floor? Can I make the motion?
Sure.
I'll make the motion. Second. Is there a second?
Can I say something, or do?
There, there has to be a second before it can be discussed.
All right, then I'll second it. Second by Alderman Florian. All right, Ald- Alderman Florian.
Um, so I'm reluctant to approve this because there's still many code violations with this property that have not been addressed. So, um, until those issues are settled, I don't think we should approve this. Because I think what they wanna do is add on to the house, and we already have issues there. I get complaints about people living in a trailer in your driveway. I get complaints about the, the property. I don't know if Mr. Berry has any documents with him regarding the violations that get reported on this property. But can you explain to me what's going on?
First, can you give your name first, please?
My name is Nikki Oram. She's the current owner of the property. Uh, he recently purchased this property, um, just a few months back. And, uh, he has been working on the property. I think he's actually working on it as we speak. Um, then he just recently purchased though and was not really able to do work on it until he became the owner, which was just a few, a couple months ago. Um, once we purchased it, we realized there was an issue on the title that this is a C R zone. And the reason for our application is to change it from the C R zone to the residential zone as there already is a property on the premises. Um, so we're asking to have the zoning conform to what's there at this time. I know that my client is working on the property, um, but he was unable to work on it before because he wasn't the owner before. And now that he is the owner, he has been doing work with it. Um, I've spoken to Mr. Sam Green about this several times. Um, and he was in, has been in support of our, uh, application as well as the last, uh, meeting that we attended. We did have full support of the last, um, committee.
Right, but I don't believe they're able to consider code violations as part of their consideration.
So for the planning department, what I can tell you is that when a building permit application comes in, we're not able to approve it if the zoning is wrong. So they can't get a permit with the zoning not conforming.
Right. Okay, but they don't need a permit to clean up the property?
That's correct.
Until, I, what I'm saying is I think until the code violations are, are addressed, which I don't know, Mr. Berry, do you have information about this property available? Um.
I think I think we should wait until we know the property is up to standard before we agree to allow this to happen.
So do the, I'm sorry, ma'am?
Alderman Turner?
So do the code violations that need to be remediated, do tho, any of those violations require a permit?
I I don't have a list of the actual code violations. I've never been given any list. If you were to tend to one to me, I'm happy to review it with my client and review it with the zoning board to confirm what would need a permit so that he can go on the right track to do this properly. I know that he has been working on several things since he became the owner, which was only a couple months ago. The previous owner was, you know, letting it get dilapidated. And my client was living in it but couldn't really do work on it until he was able to get the funds together to purchase it. So.
There is, there is information in your packet regarding the violations. The home has a number of code violations. Open compliance case, illegal fence, extension cords being used for an outdoor lighting, an illegal camper, a front porch built without a permit. So in order to get a permit, it has to come into line with zoning. So I would think that this is just to bring it into compliance for zoning before they can go on and do the work that they need to do. And if there's something else that they're trying to do, they won't be able to get
permits necessary.
To do any of the work, any extension, any building onto the house if they don't have um these issues taken care of first.
And if I recall, I believe that's what Mr. Green had stated. There was a a neighbor that was at the last committee meeting and brought something to the attention about this issue. And Mr. Green did explain that to them, that we couldn't even get the permits to fix place up without this happening the last time that we were here. And I did explain also to that committee that he just recently purchased it. In fact, I can, if you bear with me a second, I believe I have a copy of the paperwork when you.
There are a few things that can be done. Like that fence can be taken down, uh, the illegal fence.
The camper could be removed.
The outdoor lighting for an illegal camper that can be removed. Uh, abandoned vehicles on the property.
Could I trouble you for a copy of the of the list? I I never did receive.
Given over to the owner? Okay, you're gonna get it?
Yes, we'll connect with our code enforcement supervisor.
I can give you my information. Okay, I mean, if I have the information, I'll definitely be on top of that, make sure that he's addressing these issues, at least what he can for the time being.
Okay.
He just, we just purchased this less than three months ago. And so I know that he was working on some things because some of the neighbors had complained to him, and he didn't want to have a bad relationship just having bought this place with his neighbors.
Well, I I I would recommend leaving it in committee until you get a copy of all the code violations that are happening right now before it comes back for approval for um the zoning.
But regardless of uh code violations, the zoning issue has, needs to be resolved, e- even if it's.
Well, it it can come back at the next meeting, and if they.
I've been the alderman for five, over four years now. This property's been a problem the entire time. I hear about it all the time. So I'm reluctant to do anything to help them, even though they're new owners, until I know they're gonna prove to me that it's not gonna be a problem property anymore. I want them to show me they're different than the last owner.
If if I get a list, I can push my client to get some of it under control.
Come back next month, and we'll be glad to approve this.
What would the next date be?
Our next meeting would be the first meeting in um September. September, probably the. September fifth. It'd be September fifth.
Would be at five o'clock as well?
Most likely. At the earliest, it'll be five o'clock.
So there is a special uh community development meeting on the twenty-first?
Of this month.
Of this month, so.
I'm sorry, um, or the regular meeting in September. Well, it's up to her if she thinks they can get it done in two weeks.
That's the thing, I I don't know, I don't have the list, so I I'd rather.
Well, I can read it to you. They're gonna give you a copy. They're gonna give you a copy.
Let's go with the later date, just so that he's got the time to put something together, at least show you some kind of advancement and have pictures here available, so at least we can show you his intentions are good.
Okay.
Cause I believe he's, you know, I was told he was working on it today when my secretary called him to remind him about, you know, the meeting. Um, will we need to appear again today at seven P M?
Yes, you will, for that committee.
For today, though?
Oh, no, not for tonight.
Just on the fifth, we'll come back twice, yes. Okay.
And you can get with uh Chief, 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 Chief Bridges will get you to the right person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, can I get a motion to hold it over until the next committee meeting? So moved, Alderman Florian?
Second by Alderman Turner for supporting me on that. That's a motion to continue to September fifth, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll let you know exactly what time.
But they'll be the earliest at five.
Thank you.
Okay, well, do we need to vote on it? Oh, just. Oh, okay.
All right, um, item B. Ordinance approving zoning calendar twenty-seven twenty, a conditional use permit for a car wash at six thirty South Green Bay Road.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Turner.
Second.
Second by Alderman Florian. Uh, the, is there anyone here that wants to speak regarding the car wash on Green Bay? Are you? Would you like to speak? Are there any questions? Uh, does any committee members have any questions?
Um, I I I just know that the staff was concerned about the water issues, and that's been addressed, right? That's correct, it has been addressed. And then the s, the noise was, I I missed planning and zoning, which I never miss. Was that an issue brought up by the neighbors at all? Was the vacuum noise? There was a sound study that was done. Yes, right, but I didn't know if anybody was concerned about that. I don't know. Hi.
Yeah, speak up.
Uh, something's wrong with the microphone.
We did a vacuum noise case sound study, um, and everything is in conformity. It's in a commercial district, so we have a property vacant just south of it. And uh I think it's, or some towers just uh west of it. So it's kind of in a, in an isolated location, really, with nothing, no residential or too much around. Um, but regardless, the noise study was done, it's, I mean, this, it's gonna be a fully automated, very, very quiet car wash.
What's the cross street? I can't picture six thirty.
Across the street is the Secretary of State Building.
Oh, yes.
And I think it's, uh, it was the old OTB building, yes, sir. Yes. And then there's also a, I think it's uh Gojo Restaurant. That's where it is.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Any more questions? Roll call, please. Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Motion carry. Item C, thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Ordinance increasing the number of K, uh, class K one banquet liquor license by Juan for Salon Latino Banquet Salon LLC, DBA Salon Latino Banquet Hall at ten fifteen Belvedere Street.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Turner?
Second.
Second by Alderman Donenworth? Are there any questions to this?
Is that by uh Glen Rock?
No, that's closer to Jackson, um, in Belvedere. Alderman Florian?
Just east of Fire Station Number One. Yeah, I have a couple questions. Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Your name, please?
I'm Connie Smith, and I'm asking to renew or reinstate or whatever with my license at ten fifteen Belvedere Road, Salon Latino, and that's what I'm asking.
So you failed to renew on April thirtieth, right?
I'm sorry?
You you failed to renew your license on April thirtieth?
Yes.
Was this your first year renewing?
No, I've had the license since two thousand nine. I have never.
So you knew it was due on April thirtieth?
Always.
How many events have you held since April thirtieth?
Since we have moved in there?
No, no, since April thirtieth. You were supposed to renew your license April thirtieth. You didn't, it's now August seventh. How many events have you had in between there?
I can look at my calendar. Also, it's, I've sent in my taxes. I think it's there. Hold on one second. Since April, right?
April thirtieth, so essentially May first.
April, okay. Six in May. Four in June.
That's ten. Ms. Connie?
Eight in July.
Ms. Connie? Excuse me?
And last Saturday.
Who was um taking care of the renewing the liquor license before this year?
I'm sorry?
Who was taking care of the renewal for your liquor license? You were doing it every year?
Always, always. I I do everything.
Oh, okay. How did you forget? Oh, okay, okay.
Her um, her husband passed away, and so she's been going through some difficult times, and so that's why she um
You can give it back.
Wasn't able to renew at the time, so.
We, we have never had problems.
Right, but you've now held, I I get, lost count, seventeen events without a liquor license. Does your insurance cover you when you don't have a license? Like your dram shop?
I don't know, I never thought about it.
Well, that's what we're paid to do, is to think about those things. You know, this is a, you serve alcohol to the people of our community, and you're responsible for making sure they don't overdrink, and you don't serve minors, and you have to have insurance to cover all that. And if you don't have a license, I'm pretty sure the insurance doesn't cover that stuff. So I'm so sorry for your loss, and I don't mean to add on to your your drama here. But we've had this happen, we've had this happen. Another business in my ward had, failed to renew because of an illness. Um, and they were suppo, they were then required to pay a penalty to get their license. So I think it's only fair we do the same exact thing here. I mean, she's held numerous events without a liquor license. I understand you've had, you know, stuff going on in your life, I I get that, but um it think, you know, it's a requirement, it's something that's required every year, so.
I understand.
How my fellow aldermen feel about it, we've done it with other businesses that have done the same thing.
What did we do with that last one up in your ward?
Seven hundred dollar fine.
And wasn't there another fine, too?
Um, I don't, I don't know. I mean, the mayor's here, she's the liquor commissioner. Was it just seven hundred?
I think it was seven fifty.
Okay, seven fifty. Oh, but this is more than that, so. I mean, I would be happy with a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine if you guys want to make it more.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that this body has the authority to reinstate with a fine.
Well, but what we did the last time, I think Stu was here, what we said is we would, we would grant the license on the condition that there was a fine levied, and then the mayor made the decision about how much the fine was.
I see, so um it would just be amending the ordinance then to s, to ensure that all fines are paid prior to the issuance of a license.
That's exactly what.
So we would need a motion to amend the ordinance, provide that a fine, all fines are paid prior to the issuance of the license, and then we can amend the ordinance through a vote.
So I make the motion that we amend the ordinance to include the statement that the fines must be paid before the i, the license is issued.
What was the reason, Lev, for that, that last time, at the other spot? Why did they not renew?
Cause there was a kid in the hospital. In intensive care.
What, are you talking about your house?
Mm-hmm.
No, and the other owners buried, they buried the the license so she couldn't find it.
Well, he told us here that it was because his nephew was in intensive care, that they didn't, the niece was running the place, and her son was in the hospital, and that's why the license didn't get renewed. That's what they told us here. I don't, I didn't know anything about it being buried.
That's what she said in the mail. She stood right there, said that they had buried it under the mail, so she had no idea where it was. The old owners, sorry.
So I I made, I made a motion. Is anyone willing to second it?
What's the motion?
That they have to pay fines before they get their license renewed.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
What is the amendment now? That all fines?
So, so I'm understanding that the motion was to amend the the ordinance to include that all fines are to be paid prior to the issuance of a license? And then there was a second, and then there would be a roll call and an amendment to the ordinance.
Okay, oh, okay, so you got the amend, okay, roll call for the amendment. Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom? I'll vote aye for the amendment.
So so now, not to be a stickler, but there has to be a motion to approve the item as amended with a second, and then a roll call.
Okay, I motion that we approve it.
I'll make the second.
Motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Turner to approve the amended ordinance.
Good job.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Excuse me, Alderman Newsom? Nay, as I vote no for all liquor licenses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving uh to item D. Ordinance increasing the number of class C retail package sale liquor licenses by Juan for Bueller Grand Corp, DBA, Grand Liquors at thirteen twenty-eight Grand Avenue.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Turner? Second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Donenworth? Are there any questions to this motion? Roll call, please. Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom? Uh, nay. Item E, uh, motion carry. Item E, resolution approving change order number two with the At Mount Foundation per section two dash four five eight subsection I seven good faith waiver for the youth fire hydrant restoration program for sixteen thousand dollars. Can I get a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Turner? Second? Second, second by Alderman Florian? Are there any questions to this motion?
I I do have.
Alderman Florian?
I I see Mr. Garland's here. I'm hearing a little chatter in the community about this program, mostly good, but a little negative chatter. And what I'm curious about, and you may not be able to answer this here, you can tell me later if you can't. How many of your men do you think it would have taken to replace the work that these these youth did this summer? Again, if you can't answer me now, it's fine, you just, I I'd just like to know because it sounds like a lot of money that we've paid for this, but I think we would have paid even more to our regular employees to get it done, but again, only you know that.
And that's correct, and I would have to get with the uh director.
And that's correct, and I would have to get with the director of the water department and see how he functioned that in the past, and then go from there. Because it's just not one process. It's like two or three processes. So yeah, I would have to get with him on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please. Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Donanworth?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye. Motion carried. Item F, resolution waiving competitive bidding per section two dash four five eight subsection I seven good faith waiver for the purchase of a two thousand twenty-four Kia Carnival from Classic Auto Dealer LLC for an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-six cents. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Alderman Donanworth?
Second.
Second by Alderman Turner. Are there any questions to this motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Donanworth?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye, motion carried. Reports of communication, AA zoning calendar number two seven zero three, a conditional use permit for the Park District Recreation, recreational facility has been withdrawn, and that's information only. Item seven, adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Alderman Florian. Second. To adjourn.
Second.
Second by Alderman Turner to adjourn at five forty-three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Now is the time to call to order the Government Operations and Oversight Committee meeting on Monday, August seventh, two thousand twenty-three at five forty-four. Roll call, please. Oh, sorry, I didn't know you weren't sitting down. Alderman Bolton?
Present.
Alderman Felix?
Present.
Alderman Martinez?
Present.
Alderman Newsom? She'll be back. And Alderman Florian?
Present.
You have a quorum. Thank you, ma'am. Are there any public comments for this committee? Okay. Item A, under new business, a resolution approving a settlement and release of all claims for fire department workers' compensation claim number two-two zero-two-one-six W zero-zero-six.
Alderman, I think we skipped an item. We've got the minutes from July.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. I didn't, I looked at the wrong thing. Sorry. Okay, item C, in opening, approve the minutes of the Government Operations and Oversight Committee meeting held on July third, two thousand twenty-three. Can I get a motion? A purse, a move?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Do we need a roll call on that?
It's a voice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, sorry about that. Okay, item two, new business. A, I need a first and second motion to approve a settlement and release of all claims for fire department workers' compensation claim number two-two zero-two-one-six W zero-zero-six for an amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars and sixteen cents. I so move?
A motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions to this motion? Roll call, please.
Did you want to see Alderman Newsom?
Yeah, can we seat Alderman Newsom?
Thank you.
Do we need a motion?
You need a first and a second.
We could just note that she's been seated. That's fine.
Okay.
She's seated at five forty-six P.M.
Thank you. Okay, roll call? Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Felix?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Martinez?
Aye.
And Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. Item B, I need a first and second motion to ratify an intergovernmental agreement with Waukegan Community Unit School District sixty for public safety services. I so first?
Second.
Any questions to this motion? I actually would like to just... Could, I'm assuming Police Chief Navarro is the one that's gonna discuss this? I know this is a long-term program. I graduated from high school in nineteen eighty-one, and we had, Officer Joe Rakovich was our police officer back then. So I know it's been going on a long time.
Yes, it has.
I know, I know it's a necessary thing, I think. I think it's part of our community outreach for, for a police department. I don't know if you agree with that, but having a relationship with police officers, I think, is important for our children on a day-to-day basis. I know Alderman Moiseo used to talk about the fact that the officers had such great relationships with the kids. I'm assuming you are supportive of this idea?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to clarify that. Anybody else have any other questions?
The mayor has, the mayor has.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't see you there.
So, this is a one-year contract. And the reason it's a one-year contract is, we have told the school in the past that they are not really paying what it is costing us to send an officer into the school. They knew that last year. They did not, they went to their board without really talking to us about it in too much detail. So we will honor a one-year contract, and then next year they have to negotiate with us what the real costs of our, of sending that officer are. Basically, this covers about half of their salary, maybe a little bit more, but not their benefits or their pensions. We have to readdress that because it's costing services on our part for our officers not being out on the streets.
So you say a one-year contract, but does that mean a one year of the school year or a one year of a calendar year?
It's, it's the school year.
So it's from now till June, basically?
Because they don't do summer school.
Right, okay.
That they have them. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, they do do summer, yeah. So, summer school's an option.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, it would be a one-year calendar year?
Okay. Any other questions? Did you, Alderman Bolton, did you have one? Okay, okay. Roll call, please. Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Felix?
Aye.
Alderman Martinez?
Aye.
And Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item C, I need a first and second motion to go into closed executive session to discuss retention of counsel and pending or imminent litigation pursuant to section two, subsection C one and eleven of the Open Meetings Act.
So move?
I second.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Alderman Felix?
Aye.
Alderman Martinez?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
And Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Motion passes. Who was the first and second?
Aye.
That was Newsom and then Bolton. I'm sorry? Newsom and Bolton. Thank you.
I need a roll call to reconvene to public session.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Felix. Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. There is no old business, reports and communications. There are no documents listed under reports and communications. I need a first and second motion to adjourn at 7:08.
Some will.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There'll be a five-minute intermission and city council will start in five minutes. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Okay, please be seated. We're gonna go ahead and start our city council meeting. Okay, roll call please, Madam Clerk. Alder Person Donaldworth.
Present.
Alder Person Florian.
Present.
Alder Person Hayes.
Present.
Alder Person Bolton.
Present.
Alder Person Guzman.
Present.
Alder Person Martinez.
Present.
Alder Person Felix.
Present.
Alder Person Newsom.
Present.
Alder Person Turner.
Alder Man Turner is here.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is Pastor Doug Carlson here, please? Okay, please come up for the invocation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and all. Inocation, let's pray. God in heaven, maker of heaven and earth, keeper of all the things you've made, lover of our souls, giver of every good and perfect gift, including life itself and eternal life through Christ. We come to you as a blessed people in a blessed city in a blessed season. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you for these citizens who have gathered to hear and to see and to be part of this wonderful democracy. Thank you for our community. Thank you for these leaders that you've given to us, and I pray for great grace upon them. Father, what a charge they have given to them by the citizens, and what a responsibility and what a privilege. I pray you'd give them great understanding of your will, recognition of your providence over all things. Father, give them wisdom as they deliberate, and give them unity as they decide, give them grace as they disperse. Help them, Father, to do the things that would make this kind of place, it is indeed a city of progress as it is, may it continue and may it grow. We thank you, Father God, for the firemen, police officers, EMT, first responders. We thank you for all those in every level of this government, all the people that it takes to make such a great operation run and run so well. I pray for blessings and grace upon each one, Father God, and I pray for these, the citizens, our community. Father, the scripture says, "When the righteous rule, the people rejoice." May we have reason to rejoice tonight. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Carlson. He's from Grace Missionary Church. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 7th Waukegan City Council meeting. Again, I want to remind people that to ensure transparency, that the city of Waukegan posts the agenda the Friday before our city council meetings. In addition, you can go to our city website at waukeganil.gov for meeting agendas and other important information for the city. Before I start this meeting, I want to go over a process because there seems to be a little bit of confusion. I want to talk a little bit about the role of the mayor, the alderpersons, and our staff. The mayor and the staff run the day-to-day operations of the city. Thankfully, because we have an excellent staff and they do a fabulous job, as the mayor, I oversee our department heads, and the department heads oversee their given departments. I also was an alderperson for six years, so I have an excellent insight into what their job is. When it comes to city operations, the role of the alderpersons is legislative. That means any alderperson who sees issues, challenges, or problems in the community can try to remedy them legislatively. The city runs on a set of codes and ordinances. It is not anyone's job, including the alderpersons, to ask for special exceptions or one-off rule changes. Instead, if the alderperson sees something they don't feel is just or right, they should remedy it here at city council by offering updates to our codes and ordinances and submitting those in writing so our legal team can see them. By doing this, we treat everyone in Waukegan equally and transparently. We don't cut backroom deals to political donors or to our favorite businesses. This is not the government the people want, so I encourage our alderpersons to go through the proper process if they see things they want changed in the community. My office is not in the business of doing any special deals for anyone, no matter how much we may like a person, a company, or an event. This is the transparent government. This is the transparent government the people want and the government I promised when I was elected. General comments. Congratulations to Jonathan Fertiz on officially becoming an Eagle Scout. Jonathan's Eagle Scout project was the construction of a raised-bed gardening kit that will be used for a community garden at St. Paul's Lutheran Church. Food from the garden will go to those in need through the church and through the cool food pantry. August is Black Business Month, a time to acknowledge and appreciate local black-owned businesses and all they represent as we continue to strive for diversity and equality. I encourage all Waukeganites to support black-owned businesses and entrepreneurs. Our Planning and Zoning Department will hold a public meeting to discuss parking reform as part of the Unified Development Ordinance. The discussion will include changing parking minimums with guest speaker Lindsay Bailey from CMAP and Parking Reform Network. The meeting will be held on Thursday, August 24th at 6:00 p.m. and is open to business owners, developers, and the public. A questions-and-answer session will follow the presentation. Our Planning and Zoning Department is also looking for two local high school students to be part of the Waukegan Advisory Arts Committee. More information in the application are available on our website. The Waukegan Public Schools 23-24 School Year starts next Monday. Please pay attention near our schools and our neighborhoods as children walk, enter, and exit buses. Also, it is illegal and dangerous to pass buses with their red lights flashing and stop signs extended. On behalf of the city, I wish everyone a great school year, but I'm begging the public to please watch out for our children. Even though the school year starts soon, Waukegan still has plenty of events. The Farmer's Market continues Wednesdays from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the harbor through September. The History Museum is hosting a Then and Now walking tour this week. And the library's Friday concerts at noon continue through the end of the month. Yoga at the Beach continues on Saturdays at 8:00 a.m. through September. And the Genesee Theater season has started. And the Waukegan Band's last concert of the season, it's hard to believe it's already coming to an end, is tomorrow night at 7:30 p.m. at the Steiner Pavilion. A special note to people who watch our rebroadcast of the city council meetings on Sunday evenings. Comcast will be sunsetting the public access channel 17 and in some places, channel 18, and will no longer air rebroadcasts of Waukegan City Council meetings after Sunday, August 13. Livestream and archived committee and city council meeting videos are available on the city's YouTube page at youtube.com/waukegantv. And finally, I'm looking forward to tomorrow. And the keynote speaker at the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce is Wake Up with Waukegan at Bonnybrook Golf Course. Thank you to the chamber for inviting me, and limited tickets are still available. And that concludes my comments. Okay. Resolutions, proclamations, presentations, and appointments. Madam Clerk? Thank you. Thank you very much. I believe, ma'am, you need to call for a... Yep, a first and second?
The first and second, please.
Um, can I have a first for the resolution honoring former Alderman Larry V. Tempest?
I'll make the motion.
First, second by Alderman Newsom?
I second.
Okay, uh, a roll call, please, on that one? Alderman Donanworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
All right, motion pass. Mr. Tempest, would you like to come on up? You want to read this? Yes, ma'am. Resolution 23R 231 honoring former Alderman Lawrence V. Tempest. Whereas Larry Tempest was a two-time IHSA state wrestling champion representing the Waukegan High School Bulldogs. And whereas Larry Tempest was named the Most Valuable Wrestler at the University of Illinois in 1954, 55, and 56. And whereas Larry Tempest proudly served in the U.S. Army from 1957 through 1959. And whereas Larry Tempest was an educator, coach, and mentor for the Waukegan School District from 1959 to 1998, where he was instrumental in developing a grade school and junior high school wrestling program. And whereas Larry Tempest was inducted into the National Wrestling Hall of Fame Illinois Chapter Lifetime Service to Wrestling Award in 2010. And whereas Larry Tempest was an Alderman for the city of Waukegan, representing the Sixth Ward for 44 years. And whereas Larry Tempest worked tirelessly in this capacity and was elected for 11 terms and provided his expertise to nine of Waukegan's mayors during his tenure. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby recognize and honor his service and dedication to the community and to the residents of Waukegan Sixth Ward. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be read into the public record at the Waukegan City Council meeting on Monday, August 7th, 2023, and presented to Alderman Lawrence V. Tempest. Next, I need a first and a second for a resolution honoring former Mayor Wayne Motley.
Make the motion.
Okay, a first by Alderman Turner, second by Donanworth. Okay, roll call, please. Alderman Donanworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Motion pass. Okay, would you please read the proclamation? I will. Okay. It's not our first rodeo, is it? Resolution 23R 232 honoring former Mayor Wayne Motley. Whereas Wayne Motley attended Little Ford Elementary School, Jack Benny Junior High School, and graduated from Waukegan Township High School in 1969, where he played baseball, soccer, was on the swim team, and was a competitive diver. And whereas Wayne Motley started his long career as a Waukegan police officer in 1975 and retired in 2001 as a sergeant. Whereas Wayne Motley was widely known in the community as officer-friendly, paving the way for a community policing model used today, and was selected Police Officer of the Year by the Waukegan Exchange Club in 1983. And whereas Wayne Motley was a past president, vice president, and sergeant-at-arms of the Fraternal Order Police Union and was elected to the Illinois State Board of the Fraternal Order Police, serving four years on the executive board. And whereas Wayne Motley was a supervisor and instructor at the Illinois State Police Academy in 1996. And whereas Wayne Motley served as president, vice president, treasurer, and commissioner on the Waukegan Park District Board of Directors from 1995 to 2013, and championed the construction of the Waukegan Fieldhouse and the Waukegan Sports Park, and was selected by the Illinois Association of Park Districts as a recipient of the Mike Cassidy Award as Illinois Park District Commissioner of the Year in 2012. And whereas Wayne Motley served as a first board president for the Waukegan Parks Foundation, a nonprofit serving as a partner to the Waukegan Park District to ensure access to programs for all. And whereas Wayne Motley was elected as Waukegan City Clerk in 2001, serving in this role for 12 years until 2013, and was the first to institute the recording and broadcast of the Waukegan City Council meetings on cable television and on YouTube, and was selected by the Municipal Clerks of Illinois to receive the Ilion Crabbe Award in 2008. And whereas Wayne Motley served on the Waukegan Housing Authority Board for nine years from 2004 to 2013, and was selected as president of the board. And whereas Wayne Motley was elected as mayor of the city of Waukegan in 2013 until his retirement in 2017. And under his leadership, the Waukegan Police Department was the first in the nation to mandate the use of body cameras for their officers and was integral to annexing large properties along Waukegan Road to incorporate them into Waukegan, making them attractive for development. And whereas Wayne Motley was a well-known mentor, soccer player, coach, and referee, proudly representing Waukegan for many years. And now therefore be it resolved, the Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby recognize and honor Wayne Motley's service and dedication to the community and to the residents of Waukegan. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be read into the public record at the Waukegan City Council meeting on Monday, August 7th, 2023, and presented to Mayor Wayne Motley, dated the 7th day of August, 2023.
Lori, Lori, remember tomorrow, and put everyone's attention. Uh, tomorrow at 1:00 p.m., Glenn Flora and Hickory will put up another sign, and that'll complete the ceremonies, okay? Thank you.
Okay, next. Um, last week, we talked about the stability pledge. And why was that important? It was something that the Illinois Municipal League actually talked about at their meetings and have suggested to all municipalities to do. And what it says is that we as leaders will be civil, not only to you, but to each other. And last year we took, or last week we took the vote, or last city council meeting, to see what elected officials would like to sign it. So tonight, I'd like to call up down front Alderman Bolton, Alderman Guzman, Alderman Martinez, Alderman Felix, Alderman Newsom, Alderman Florian, Alderman Hayes, Dr. Schwab, and myself have all signed this, so I'd like to bring you all up. Okay, next, we'll be doing a special order of business, which is the September 17th, 2023, from the special event permits. Carlos and Sean, Sean is here, right?
Actually, ma'am, is there any way that we can move this until after audience time?
Um, I think they need to give their presentation because it'll help answer questions. Okay. Okay, um, can I have a motion to open the special order of business? That was Martinez in second, was, um, Newsom. Okay, roll call. Alderman Donanworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Motion pass. Thank you, Madam Carlos.
Good evening all. My name is Carlos Parada, and I am the special event coordinator for the city of Waukegan. And I want to welcome all tonight to the city council meeting. Uh, we are having a special presentation on exciting events that are occurring on September 17th, 2023. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Carlos Parada. Yo soy coordinador de eventos especiales de la ciudad de Waukegan. Quiero darles la bienvenida a todos a esta reunión de consejeros y ministros. Tenemos una presentación especial sobre los eventos que ofrecerán el 17 de septiembre de 2026. The reason why we're making this presentation tonight is to clear up any confusion as to the events that will take place on September 17th, 2023. We are faced with an unusual situation of having two special events on the same day of the season.
As you may recall, the city council was faced with the decision as to whether or not to uphold a denial of the Fiesta Patria special event permit. Council voted to reverse the denial, and due to that fact that Puro Fútbol had already submitted for a special event, the city opted to approve both special event permits for the same date and same time. the city opted to approve both special event permits for the same date and same time. Due to the fact that the city resources are needed to assist with special events, and resources are limited, there will be some speculations this year in order to keep everyone safe and for everyone to enjoy the festivities. The parade speculations this year, las espectaculaciones del desfile, are up in the presentation, están enfrente. The parade participations are limited to only sixty individuals, regardless whether they're on a float or marching. Staging at nine A. M. by Puro Fútbol will commence at Robert, uh, Robert Abbott Middle School. After that, the parade will commence at ten A. M. to twelve P. M., pending approval by the school district. After that, the second organization will start staging at eleven thirty A. M. by Fiesta Patrias, and that will, uh, start at Miguel Juárez Middle School. Once everything is prepared, the parade will start at twelve thirty and end at two thirty P. M., as well pending approval by the school district. Horses or other live livestock will not be permitted to participate in the event, and will not be permitted in any of the city's downtown areas or anywhere near the event, especially given the fact that two events will be occurring at the same time. The city resources cannot accommodate the participation of horses either in the parade route or used by spectators. In conclusion, the city is really excited about the special event, and the city staff have put it to ensure that everyone has a chance to celebrate and bring our community together in safe, fun, and positive way.
At this time, the Alderman can ask questions, but it's not audience time. Just for this, you can ask. Any, go ahead.
Um, so I'm curious about the sixty participants. I mean, I don't know if they're gonna have traditional bands, but if you have a band, you've got thirty people right there, you know? Like, sixty seems pretty low. How do we come up with that number?
Absolutely. This was, uh, determined based on last year's parade. Around a hundred and twenty participants were all together. So because we are celebrating, uh, this, um, heritage month for September, and having two different organizations, we just split it in half for each of them to have sixty participants.
It just seems like a really low number to participate in a parade to me. I mean, if you put ten people on a float, you get, you know, now you're down to fifty. You know, I mean.
It all also comes down to the, the security of the, of the community as well. And make sure that both, both organizations have enough time for them to, to be in the parade and have enough time for them to, to be organized.
And you've already talked to the two different?
A letter has been sent to both parties. Both organizations did receive a letter with, with these, uh, recommendations or these.
Parameters.
Parameters of, of how the parade, uh, will be handled.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So can these numbers be altered? Because it doesn't sound like it's realistic, right?
I totally agree. Sixty people, that's.
So I know she said, oh, this is question, so that's my question.
Sorry.
Well, I have a question. Historically, um, each parade, how many participants do they have?
About a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty?
Mm-hmm, approximately. So that's why we decided to, uh, we didn't decide, the committee decided to, uh, split the, the participants in half, so that, that both organizations can have enough time to set up and, uh, march in the parade.
That counts sixty individuals is not sixty events then, like sixty, um.
Floats.
Groups, is what I'm asking.
Sixty individuals, regardless of whether they are in floats or marching.
Uh, I've never heard of, ever of a parade with only sixty people. That is not a parade party. That is, sounds like a block party to me.
Um, how many, you said we had a hundred and twenty last year?
Approximately.
Okay, and that came off of, where, where did that information come from?
That came up, uh, based on our debriefing from last year.
Okay, and is there a list of participants that went with it?
Not necessarily for the parade.
Okay.
Um, but that's what, it was given in the debriefing from last year.
Okay.
Excuse me, I have a question. Um, so I guess I've, I've never really heard of a parade with six, is this, is this gonna be a march or is it gonna be parade?
It's a parade.
Okay, so have you also let the public know there's only gonna be sixty? Is it, is it even worth going to the parade? So can we get some clarification on that?
Sure. Sorry, can you repeat your question?
Yeah, I just said, to me it seems more like a march than a parade, and I, did you already let the general public know that it is only be on sixty, sixty?
Well, this is why we're having the, the.
Because if you're talking about thousands of people coming to see a sixty people, I mean. Did, did, did you advertise to let people know there's sixty? Because is it, it, to me, is it even worth parking my car, bringing my family out for sixty? I mean, does, to me it seems like a march. I've never, ever in my life heard of a parade with sixty people.
Absolutely.
But it's two parades.
It's two parades though.
Back to back, so.
Yeah, sixty, sixty people.
I mean.
Why can't the, um, two.
This sounds confusing.
Two parades each with one twenty, if that's what. I mean, I don't even know why there's a limit, but if there's gonna be, it would seem.
Because the police have to be able, for security reasons, have to be able to handle that. So what we could do is you could, um, you, you could give me some numbers and we can run them by the committee and see what they think they can handle for security. Matt, I'm sorry, Mayor, could you repeat that, Mayor?
They handle one twenty before.
It's traffic control.
Right, so once the, the first group of one twenty, if they get that many, goes past, then the second group, and so.
How much time do they have?
Two hours.
Two hours?
Yeah.
Yeah, two hours. How much time was before?
Roughly two, three hours.
So by the time the first group finishes and gets to their, um, festival location, then the second group will start and you got the security.
But there's traffic from different directions coming because they're not in the same locations.
Right, ones at, uh, the parking lot by the library and ones at the parking lot.
Not for the parade. That's the festival.
That's the festival.
Because you've got festivals going on at the same time, too.
Where, where, was, I thought the parade route was the same thing, they're just starting at different locations.
They're. No, they're not starting at the same location.
Starting at two different schools, Abbott School and Warren School. But they're going down Washington Street, right? Yeah.
I'm sorry, and can they get through everything? You know, like, we wanna make it so that two hours is a reasonable amount of time for people to get through, because otherwise that throws the next parade off, which means if you happen to live in the neighborhood, your street is now being closed for over four hours, probably more.
Yeah.
You know, and.
Special event.
Yeah, but we get a lot of complaints about it also. Why don't we, why don't you give me numbers and we can discuss with security what we think we can do? What if we did sixty entries? So like, if you have a group of, if you have a float, that's one thing, whether you have ten people under or two. Then you've got to specify, there's gotta be a limit on how many people can be at that entry. So is there like ten people? So, yeah, okay, so what if we say we, you can do sixty entries of up to ten people? I mean, that would give them a little more wiggle room anyway, and it'll still just be sixty positions on the, the road, whether it was sixty people marking, marching in single file or if you have a flow. So, I mean, I think that's a little more realistic.
Do, do we know how many, thank you Lynn, that's an excellent point.
Oh my God. Sorry, I should turn my. Did you have a heart attack?
So, listen.
Alderman Florian, it's time to buy the lottery ticket. It's a billion dollars.
There you go. Oh, no, I forgot what I was gonna say.
Stability's working. Um, so that's like six hundred people. Um, so you would be talking twelve hundred total on the streets for the event. All gonna have ten entries, though.
Yeah, that, that was my question. Do we know how many entries each group?
They don't submit their paperwork until.
Well, maybe not at this point, but.
Yeah, by August seventeenth, we'll know that. But, um, we don't know, I'm sorry, we don't know that beforehand.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, uh, can I raise another question?
Sure.
So I know there was some confusion or discussion or some changes. So we have Fiesta Patrias, and the responsible party is Margaret Carrasco. We have Puro Fútbol, responsible party, Oscar Zafeta. But my understanding is that Margaret Carrasco is Puro Fútbol. Is there?
No.
I don't know if we can get some clarification on that.
You can have a sole proprietorship under one, and you can incorporate an LLC with the same name under another. That's a different issue, but it doesn't have anything to do with us. Because you can have a business name as a sole proprietorship, and you can have an LLC with the same name. But you can only have one registered with the state. But a sole proprietorship doesn't have to be. All right.
Cool, thanks.
I have a question. Um, in terms of the, um, in looking ahead, if we, we were planning to have a bigger amount of people? Because, I mean, I think that would make a little bit more sense, um, maybe in the plan to have a specific exit out. That way they don't come back in or whatnot. So that's something that we can, we can talk about, uh, in the planning. So when we're going through the, through the parade, have the people that are walking have a specific out. And then if they wanna circle back around and come back and enjoy the festivities, that'd be great. But that way they don't come back in and create all this traffic.
Well, that's how the parade, so that's kind of already sorted out. Um, and they run at different times, and there's a half hour in between there, so that people who wanna see one parade or.
No, for the people that are walking.
Yeah, um, so you can, there's that time in there to do that. Um, but the biggest issue is security, because Washington Street is a harder street to secure. That, that's always been the biggest problem.
I have, I, do we have an estimate, like, I mean, in the past, I know the, this parade has really brought out thousands and thousands and thousands of people. Are we really prepared for this, and what, I mean, this is something major here. You, you got two, two events going on at the same time. You're gonna have people, thousands of people downtown walking around the area. Are we really prepared for this?
Well, we've talked to our Chief of Police and Fire as well, Chief of Fire, to have the, the security measures, measures for this type of event. And definitely they're putting a plan together to make sure that our community's safe and also enjoy, uh, the, the festivity, festivities, so.
But that was based on the sixty.
Based on the sixty individuals. Obviously, that's just for the parade. Uh, for, for the festivals, they also have a plan for, for that as well, to make sure that, that the community is, is safe. That's our, our, the Chief of Police and Fire, our main concern is the community. Make sure that everyone is safe, make sure that everyone is, is enjoying, uh, the, the festivities. So yes, number one thing is public safety, of course. And that's why we are, that's why we would like to have this event, and it's, it's a, it's historic for the city of Waukegan and have two organizations come and, and, and put this together. And obviously, we would like it to be positive, uh, for, for the community to enjoy, obviously, right? But the number one thing is to make sure that everyone, public safety is, is the number one priority, obviously, at the end of the day.
I must also add that this is very unprecedented, that we have two major events going on. I mean, this is, probably, this attracts more people than ever in Waukegan. So again, you're gonna have thousands and thousands of, of people, but I, I've never seen anything like that, so why is it that we couldn't, uh, honor one day have a, a festive parade, and then maybe do the, give them the opportunity to have different days to do it? Why is it that it has to be done together?
Well, that was, they both requested that date. And, you know, you had offered as Alderman, well, why can't they do it together? Well, the groups don't want to do it together. So we have to kind of do it a little bit separate, but they both requested the same day. How do you say to one person, you get that day that you requested, not the other? Um, the other part of it is, we have had officers working a lot of overtime for all the summer activities.
Yeah.
Now at some point, they need to start taking vacation time. Um, the weekends, like the sixteenth, there's already another event that day. We have, the ninth, we have, um, the airshow. There's a lot of big events from now until, you know, mid-September. And obviously, you're coming up against late September, October, people are concerned about the weather. But this is kind of the date for their celebration. And so, you know, they both want the same date, you know? Um, and we are putting all hands on deck. But if it gets too big, it becomes a safety, a public safety issue.
Why couldn't one of them do their, theirs on, on the sixteenth? It's just the day.
Because there's a big event that day already.
What's that?
Carlos, you know the.
Fiesta Sinfronteras. That would take place on Genesee Street.
Yeah, it's on Genesee. It's another big event. So, um, you really kind of, we're stretching our resources as it is. So.
Excuse me. It just seems to me like next year it should just come in front of the City Council and just give one or the other, not both. That's what should be done.
Or the other option is, is the city could take it over.
That's a good one.
No.
Yeah, um.
Well, that's also a positive thing.
You know, um.
You know, but sixty, I mean, that is just way too low. I mean, and then horses. They're not allowed. Why not?
Uh, city ordinance.
There's a city ordinance prohibiting, um, horses and livestock in the city.
Didn't, didn't they have it last year?
Yeah.
And the year before that, and the year before that?
Yeah. But we can't have all these events going on. How are you gonna have the first parade that has horses? And what if they don't clean it up, and now you've got another parade that's coming along? We don't have a history of the horsemen who are being cleaned. And so how are you gonna do that?
Don't they have like those diapers for horses? I mean, like they have dogs or something? I don't know.
Yeah, but where is that all gonna be dumped? When you have two parades going. No, because it becomes our problem.
It's the city's problem.
Um, because now it goes down your, your sewer system.
They can pay for the, um, the garbage can at the end of the tunnel or whatever.
And that doesn't happen either. So, um, I'm, you know, it, all these are.
Can't that be required in the payment of the permit that they pay for before they do the parade?
You can require a deposit, but you can't. You can require a deposit, but you can't make them pay the whole thing upfront. Are we, Mayor, are we needing to vote on this, or was this just discussion? This was what, um, the committee had decided in talking with public safety and everything. That was the numbers, if we're gonna do this. Because like I said, it was kinda put, okay, we had one group that had reserved the date, and now, when it went to appeal, the majority said, let's, let them have it on the same, you know, why can't they do it together? So, that's what the, you know, the special, uh, event committee decided in talking with, um, the public safety. Because again, it's not just, it's getting Public Works, it's getting, um, the police and fire department there. Many at overtime rates.
Mayor, I have a question for you. I was wondering, with so many people come down, we're talking about thousands, have you, um, maybe let other cities know to be, like, that we are having this major event? And just to be on the lookout or be alert about that, just in case something? I'm not, I'm not saying that it's gonna happen, but, uh, you know, that'd be an option, let other municipalities know that, hey, Waukegan, we're, we're expecting over fifty thousand people downtown.
The police have those resources to do that. The police have those resources.
That's the question I have.
So, I would suggest, um, if you want to look at a different number, then I think we need to have a discussion with public safety where they tell us the number. They were okay with each group having sixty. I don't know that they're gonna be okay with sixty entries, but six hundred people, because that's twelve hundred people total, plus your crowd control. So, I'm not willing to make that decision here without talking to public safety. Because that's the most important thing. Um, so I, we can look into that. Um, the other thing is, everybody has to have their things in by August seventeenth. If things aren't in, then the permit is terminated. So... Any other questions? Thank you, Carlos.
You're welcome. And, and again, I would like to invite the community to come and join us and be part of this special day. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, it, it's for everyone to enjoy. And public safety is number one key. That's, that's all we would like for the city of Waukegan.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Carlos. Audience, audience time. Okay, we're at audience time. I think we're gonna have a full load here. Thank you. You'll have three minutes each, two, um, up to three minutes each. I'm gonna call you in groups of five. Please proceed to the east side of the room lineup. And the cameras will not turn on you per the policy. It'll be on the dais, so make sure you state, state your name. The first five will be Oscar Zapata, Philoramo Lopez, Herod Lopez, Pastor Jesus Gerena, and Angel Lopez. Oscar Zapata. You have three minutes, let me get that up, hold on.
Mayor, can you tell us again why the camera can't show who's speaking? Especially in light of the new, uh, the lack of the, the public access channel is going away? But a lot of people would like to see who's, who's speaking.
Um, that is part of the camera system that we are revamping? I don't know, at some point, we're still not done with the process revamping.
Well, the camera screens, it was in the earlier committee, uh, Director Garland was speaking and the camera was over there. I don't see what the big deal is.
They've got it over there now.
No, it's pointing at us. He's pointing at us. Why can't you get the camera there? Just ask me for clarification.
Okay, Mr. Oscar Zapata, and yeah, no, the cameras are the same, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilors, and public here. My name is Oscar Zapata, director of the newspaper, Puro Football.
Can you speak into the mic, so, because I can't hear you?
Don't move the mic, just move forward.
Thank you. My name is Oscar Zapata, director of the newspaper, Puro Football. I want to thank you for the opportunity for allow us to present our version in connection with this year's Independence Parade. The Hispanic and non-Hispanic community is shocked by the way the council granted a parade to the, to the person in charge of Fiesta Patrias, knowing full well the type of person she is. And in my opinion, she's a total psychopath because she complies with everything the profile. Anti-social personality disorder, and her attitude is reflected in her actions. Socially irresponsible behavior, ignoring, violating the rights of others. Inability to distinguish between God and evil. Difficulty showing remorse or empathy. Tendency to lie frequently, manipulate or hurt others. Recurring problems with the law. General disregard for safety and responsibility. The seven council members who voted to help this psychopath may have been influenced by these personal attacks, but you reflect fear and poor judgment. That's why we are here today, to tell you to listen to the people, that we are trying to do good for the community. As in our culture, strengthen the ties between the different communities of Waukegan and strengthen this beautiful city. Your votes in her favor only cause annoyance, this, this core, division, confusion. And we don't want that for this city. And I will be, and I will be brief. We want to decide to have a unique parade to be taken into account. And that, you can vote so that only the parade that has already been approved for Puro Football remains. And where the essential structure of the parade con- concentrates the heroes of the independence, the insurgents, the Guarines, the Apaches, the Costenos, the Warband, and the Mexican escort, as well as the brothers from the southern countries that faithfully accompanied us this year. And I take this opportunity to tell everybody, everyone who does my...
Thank you, Mr. Zapata, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lopez, state your name, please.
Guillermo Bakuplope Rubi. Ah, yes. Uh, first and foremost, I'm here to represent the committee that are the actual troops in the parade. Uh, each and every year for thirty-plus years, that has, it has since been established. Um, we are not affiliated with any politician, any club, or any set human person. This was brought up that we are here to unionize this city, which we have done since the beginning of this parade, through my community and my people. There's literally an image of two licenses segregating our people. First and foremost. No one asked my troops, who are literally the parade, anything. Scheduling, um, quantity of people, capacity, nothing. They, we are used as political pawns or for your financial gains, spread across newspapers with our images of my people and my community, that thanks to this city of Waukegan, has led us to participate. But tradition is tradition. And it seems like the snowball is being formed, and it's going to start downhill. There is no unionization with two parades. All of a sudden, the public is an issue regarding safety? I would like to see all the reports with all the issues regarding public safety. Anyone who's reported an issue, I would love to see that. The records show, please. Uh, there's all this talk from people outside of my community, who do not even participate in the parade. Sixty-plus people, literally, is probably a set-up group of mine. We've had horses here, year after year, now that's an issue because of manure. I see dog poop on every sidewalk, I don't complain. If it's an issue because someone's gotta clean it up, don't worry, I'll step over it. But this isn't unionizing anything. You change our schedule to ten in the morning for one set. No one asks us. We are the parade. There's also an issue with financials. Oh, we're closing businesses, they can't do this and that, they don't make money. You're closing it for an additional three hours. And then you, you wanna show a parade at ten in the morning, where, what, five people are gonna show up? To see a bunch of political floats and a bunch of financial floats? I wonder, I hope that money was well worth it at that point in time. But remember, this community is sixty-plus percent Hispanic.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Alright. Mr. Lopez, state your full name.
My name is Bakuplope, he's my son. Uh, we started this parade since nineteen, nineteen ninety-nine, I believe so. Nineteen eighty-eight, sorry. The, the community of Tonatico, because I'm from Tonatico, we, we are about sixty thousand persons, yes, right here in Waukegan. We are a very engrossing people. We celebrate our tradition. We don't need nobody to tell us how to do, who to bring, especially if he's not from Tonatico. And I'm talking about a person that you guys voted to give another permit, since we already have one. I mean, not me, Oscar, uh, this just divides. One more thing, I, I represent social, group Social Mexicans del Sur, and we find, we find to bring for the first time a band of kids. The best students from every school, the principal selected. Nine, it was twenty eighteen, it was so beautiful. He did MBS or, or, or parade, people crying. I saw that, and that's what we do. Our people. The first year that it went, it was the parade, it was us from Tonatico that started. Uh, Juanita Alledema went to our club, and she said, let's do a parade. We started. Tonatico. Now it, it grew up a lot. Now, we have a band, I, I repeat, since nineteen, uh, eighteen, and someone else is trying to bring another one, and I have no problem with that. I hope they bring it, because it's a beautiful experience for the kids. But they want to destroy what we started. It took hard work. Nothing is easy to do it, but it's easy to destroy. And I don't want to be associated with that person, because if you are not with her, she is digging, digging how to help you. I just can't see, not even mention the name, because of how much pain she creates to people. She divides, and she doesn't care. And I, I just can't explain more things, because it, it makes me feel bad, for real. But I hope you guys take a better decision, and I hope those kids and our kids, because we have a tradition from our club. And it's okay to bands, it's a beautiful experience for the kids. I hope they vote, bands, and enjoy the time.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, thank you. Pastor Jesus Gerena, state your full name, please, sir.
Hi, my name is Pastor Jesus Gerena, and I'm with Iglesia Rebaño. I'm also a resident of Waukegan, and I've been for many years. And today, um, as I witness and I sit here and I listen to everyone speaking, I looked up, you know, just a couple of things, and Alderman Guzmán and Alderman Martinez and Alderman Felix. In twenty nineteen, the census determined that Waukegan was made out of thirty-nine percent and above of the Latino community. I, I wasn't shocked just to hear that sixty participants will be allowed to come into both of those parade. And, and I'm shocked because if the emphasis, as I heard it, and I could be wrong, on public safety was on the participants, then we're looking at the wrong number. Because it's not the sixty participants who will be marching throughout, you know, town, up and down. It's everyone else that's gonna come from everywhere else to come and see this beautiful community. I mean, we're missing the point here. This is amazing to have the diversity. I'm not Mexican, I'm Puerto Rican, my wife is Mexican, but I, I love our culture and I love what we stand for. And as a man of faith, I love that faith is the beacon of our community, and today, that was challenged here. Division is evil. And we have a beautiful community. And I'm not here to be like, oh, I'm with him, and I'm with her, and I'm with her, and I'm with him, I, I'm with God. And I think that we are looking at the wrong number, we're looking at sixty participants, I'm, I'm sorry, who made that decision? We need to reconsider that. We also need to reconsider public safety. But we have thirty-nine percent, you know, sixty-nine as a young man, so, cause numbers change all the time. And with the influx of more Latinos coming here, this is a beautiful community. We need to reconsider that. And we need to reconsider that, you know, it is not that I'm Mexican, that I'm Puerto Rican, that I'm from Belize, that I'm from Honduras, that I'm from Colombia. That is not a weakness, that is actually the strength of our community. We're different. Y el arroz con gandules sabe mejor con salsa verde. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Angel Lopez, please state your full name, sir.
Hello, hello, good afternoon. My name is Angel Lopez, founder of Angel's Boxing Academy. Uh, today, I'm not here to talk about boxing. Uh, we're here to, to, you know, share what we have become in the community. I'm a nonprofit organization, and in the past two years, I've been wanting my kids to experience this, uh, parade. It's one of the biggest parades. We love for July. We have more than forty-five kids, which, uh, looking at numbers, they're not gonna, all gonna be able to, uh, march. Uh, but, um, I wanna, I wanna, uh, explain what is the goal with this parade. Uh, I'm looking forward for our kids to do that, because not only, uh, it's about celebrating our roots, but also having the kids given the chance to voice themselves, to know what they, what they really want for their community. If we see this division, then, you know, I cannot attend to march at the ten o'clock, or then the other group could march in another place, you know, it's, I'm dividing them. So, in the past years, I wasn't able to do this parade. This year is different. This year, um, I'm looking forward, because they gave me an opportunity to, they gave us an opportunity for our kids to be part of this parade in a way that our kids are gonna be, be able to deliver a message. That day, we're gonna be able to walk over, like I said, forty-five kids with a message of guns down, gloves up. They're really happy, and they're really excited to know that they're gonna be part of that parade. Knowing that, you know, there's a little bit of, uh, things going on here. I just wanna come here and let you guys know, the community know that, uh, my community, the one that I'm building, I am happy to know that I'm doing good things, and I'm not dividing nobody. I'm not here to choose, I'm here to make my choices and have the kids know that they're here to change the world. They're the future in our community. So that's all I wanted to say. I'm looking forward to this, uh, seventeen, and I'm looking forward to our kids to be able to march. And that's where forty-five kids, so that's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. The next five will be Rayon Edwards, Clyde McLemore, Jasmine Campos, Mariana Campos, and Margaret Caranza. Rayon Edwards, Clyde McLemore, Jasmine Campos, Mariana Campos, Margaret Caranza. Uh, Mr. Ma, Mr. Edwards, please state your name, please.
Rayon Edwards. You know, I'm disappointed tonight, and I'm gonna say a lot of things. Y'all just divided this community even further than what it had to be. And that's sad, because y'all are the professionals. We shouldn't be here. We shouldn't even be talking about this. If y'all would've been doing what y'all were supposed to have been doing, we wouldn't be here. Right, Mr. Guzmán and Mr. Felix? Y'all want to come in the office, and the first thing y'all want to do is challenge about what a clerk is getting paid. Y'all didn't even understand... Y'all didn't even understand the requirements of your own job as an alderman. Your people was hurting. This was going on when y'all was elected. That should have been the first thing that y'all addressed. But what did y'all do? Y'all came up here and want to play politics. Y'all wanted to be a politician. You didn't address the needs of your people, these people that came out and voted for you. Now you wanna sit up here and act like you care. You wanna sit up here and say, oh, only sixty, only sixty percent participants. You should have knew that before we got here. Those board docs is posted. You guys are aldermen. You get it before they post it. So do your homework. That's what we pay y'all to do, right? That goes for all of y'all. You should have already had your questions. We shouldn't be talking about sixty people. And so I want you to be prepared what you got to do now, because you did it for the Latino community. When that same problem happened in the black community, you better be ready to do the same thing. I see Angel get up here, who's been working with kids for three, four, five years in this community, and all of y'all knew it. But what did your chief of staff do? He wanted to give the Aunt Maule Foundation some money for kids to go paint fire hydrants. How long have you been working with kids? Do your homework. Y'all run for these offices. You say you want the job. You say you gonna do the job. What's doing? That plan you just put out here, you know that's a crap of mess. You not treating everybody fairly. You got a fire sitting right up there, a Black Lives Matter expo. And you doing Mayor Thomas? Did you mention it? No, you didn't. You said support black businesses. You didn't say nothing about the expo. But you don't wanna say nothing about that because he fires you up, because we cause you out, because we bring things to the forefront. This city, every day, is getting more and more pathetic, and y'all wanna talk about public safety. Hell, my kids are still getting killed, and we ain't talked about public safety. We ain't did nothing about it. We ain't allocating no money for it. Every time I come in, I look at that agenda, vendor's payment is going up and up and up and up. And you're talking about following the rules of the city order. How don't you start with some of your directors that don't live in the city that's supposed to be?
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. McLemore? State your name, Mr. McLemore.
Clyde McLemore, Black Lives Matter. And I must give a shout out to the black people of Montgomery, Alabama. They didn't know that we as a people could come together. Big shout out to the young man of sixteen years old swam across the river to help the dock worker. White privilege did not prevail. In old business, the Chamber of Commerce wants to rent an office for ten dollars a year here in City Hall. There is a black chamber, and I'm sure there's a Spanish chamber. Uh, are you gonna give them an office too for ten dollars a year? When the mayor first got elected, the first thing she did was change the toilet. I am sure she didn't wanna sit behind a black man. I told the mayor I would follow the money. On July thirteenth, I for you to bag up payment for the money, for the money run. Alderman, Alderman, all y'all, stop voting for this money run without investigating. This money run, this tonight is one, one thou- one hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-five forty-one. Do you have, do any one of y'all have any questions about this money run? Three hundred and thirty, thirty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars is going to Aunt Maule Foundation when he was getting sixteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. But now it double his money. Is there any question on that? On May twenty-third, the city bought a bacon leather sofa, and it was shipped to Maria McClure, uh, Mayor's Clerk Secretary, for seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents, and ninety-nine cents. The city has the lockdown. The residents can't sit on that that beacon leather sofa. Uh, then they bought a freezer for one thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. Alderman, stop approving this money. A thousand dollars for a freezer? They can't do secondhand at eighty dollars for a freezer? The chamber received six hundred and forty dollars. I don't know what the invoice was for. All it was was an invoice. Didn't say what it was for. For six hundred and forty dollars, but they wanna rent an office here for ten dollars a year. Over the weekend, black people showed this country, we can fight, we can swim, we can unite, we can read. Thank you, Montgomery, Alabama, for waking this country up.
Thank you, Mr. McLemore. Uh, Jasmine Campos, Mariana Campos, Margaret Carranza. Go ahead, line up. Jasmine, you would first state your name.
Hi, good evening. My name is Liz Delgado, and I'm the Fiesta Patrias twenty twenty-three pageant director. And I'm here to make the invitation to all the John Hispanic ladies in Lake County to participate in this year's gala event. Also invite any businesses interested in being a sponsor for the two formal gala events or for the queen crown that's going to be imported and especially made for this year event. I promise it will be an absolutely stunning event with the most beautiful John Hispanic ladies in Lake County, competing to be this year for the Queen of Fiesta Patrias. It can be contacted. My telephone number is in there, is two-two-four-two-three-seven-eight-nine-nine-seven. Also, here's with me one of our ladies participating, Ms. Mariana Campos, and she's gonna give you more information.
Good evening. My name is Mariana Campos. I am eighteen years old. I am one of the candidates for Ms. Fiesta Patrias Waukegan. I am of twenty twenty-three. I am proud to represent Jalisco. I am very excited to participate. We were not able to get a translated version of the flyer, but for today, but I will be translating it for you. The presentation will be on September first, the pageant will be on September eighth, and the coronation will be on September fifteenth. The requirement is to be originally or live in Lake County, be single, with not children, be between the ages of fifteen and twenty years old, have heavenly, heavenly of hours for the activities to current out. Respect the letter of commitment that you will be signing when you're enrolling together with your parents or guardians. For more information, please check our Fiesta Patrias Waukegan Facebook page. Thank you for your attention, and again, thank you very much for the invitation.
Thank you. Margaret Carrasco, is that you?
I think so. Um, yes, good evening. Primero quiero toda la gente de Fiesta Patrias y todos los familiares, las personas que vienen a participar en el desfile, que pasen enfrente conmigo, junto conmigo, por favor. I invited all the people from Fiesta Patrias and all family members of the participants to come forth here and stand enfrente, enfrente de la cabeza. Okay, so she can see the faces of our community. Por favor, pasar, pasen todos de fuera, pasen para adelante, pasen para adentro, por favor. Okay, I will begin now. Okay. Okay, first of all, we received an email in which we asked the city for, the city demanded from us six thousand dollars for the event. We requested a detail of what exactly that would cover, because I need to tell the community what that money is for, and there's no response. Second of all, we don't write blank checks. Next, in regards to the horses, I brought tonight the Illinois state law regarding horses. You are in violation. The ordinance that you're applying to us does not apply. We're not doing livestock, horses running loose. Instead, under Illinois law, when a horse is mounted with a rider, that is public transportation. We do hundreds of parades all over the county in Waukegan, including Fourth of July parade, and there's not an issue. Stop being racist. Stop being corrupt, Ann Taylor. Next. Um, tonight, as I believe, uh, uh, Mr. McLemore said filed the money, I request an alderman to challenge and to stop the payment of Puto Football. Ann Taylor is filtering money down to him. We are Puto Football. I brought, and the mayor put the foot in her mouth. Thank you. Last week, we brought the state of Illinois filings for Puto Football, Puto Football News, Puto Football Newspaper, which Fiesta Patrias, it belongs to us legally. And tonight, you said it tonight, that a proprietorship can be, we have the legal certified of weird proprietorship of Puto Football, Puto Football News, and Puto Football Newspaper. So we requesting, that permit is ours, and we're asking the alderman to cancel it. We cannot divide our community. We cannot have two parades. And since we illegally are Puto Football Newspaper, Puto Football News-
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you.
Cancel the permit.
Thank you. The next four will be Brother Blanks, Carolina Fabian, and Elizabeth Delgado. Brother Blanks, Carolina Fabian, and Elizabeth Delgado. All right, Brother Blanks, please state your full name. Ready when you are, sir.
Brother Blanks, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. At a previous city council meeting, I made mention that Black Abolition Movement for the Mind had declined a Waukegan fire hydrant painting contract and proposal for the reasons stated at the proposal meeting. Our priority is still what it have always been, and that is real police accountability. Now to the issue at hand. Public safety encourages public trust. Police brutality and apathy induces lack of trust and load in no integrity. Citizens feel more encouraged to trust peace officers who are policing with a peacekeeping approach and intentions as opposed to those of a search and destroy. Political position and appointments are not forever. The Waukegan Civilian Office of Police Account, Waukegan Civilian Office of Police Accountability, or WCOBA, is an investment in future safety and protection of our youth and citizens. History has proven, time and time again, law enforcement in many cases cannot be trusted to hold itself accountable. WCOBA, for new recruits and good peace officers who aspire to conduct quality peacekeeping policing as opposed to search and destroy missions, can prove effective in weeding out a racist, overzealous, and malicious culture of policing that has dominated this police department and law enforcement throughout the nation. So that such new recruits and those aspiring to become good peace officers can do, can do so without under, can do so without working under the threat of resentment and intimidation from overzealous, racist, and a hostile work environment. Such would prove to be beneficial for first the citizens, then officers of goodwill and good intentions, and a reflection, a good reflection on city government. I look forward to hearing the thoughts of aldermen and all the women regarding this urgent and timely matter on tonight. I mentioned before myself as part of that committee. However, I would like to mention two other people in all fairness and, uh, in all fairness and, um, balance, two people that I've known for quite some time. That is Doctor and Mrs. Dylan Burdette, which I think would be fair and being objective and being accountable. But I look forward to hearing each and every alderman, because this is something that's well overdue and much needed in this city when we talking about public safety tonight, and we look forward to hearing from each and every one of you aldermen tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Blanks. Carolina Fabian, please state your full name.
My name is Carolina Fabian. Um, hello and good evening, council mayor and my fellow community. It's kind of distracting back there. I understand, so I'm gonna try to be brief. Um, I watched last city meeting, which included a hearing for a decision on a permit application to be upheld or overturned. And I just wanted to commend all the persons Florian and Hayes, who voted to keep the denial upheld. Because as I watched, I felt that the city administrators presented, that presented, gave a clear explanation with enough evidence to explain why the decision was made to first reject the permit and then, uh, the second time to deny it. To vote to overturn their decision demonstrates a lack of mistrust in their compet, a lack of trust, sorry, in their competence as there was no string from the protocol. There was, which states that there should not be any outstanding debt prior to a permit being filed. Not only was there outstanding debt, there was also a history of late payments from the years prior as well. So I'm not sure why it is acceptable for an individual or a committee to be months, almost a year past due on a bill that is due on the date of service. The city is quick to shut off our water if we don't pay within ninety days. So to allow a person to continue to rack up fees in the form of an event is, really doesn't make sense to me. Additionally, several community members and constituents have voiced their concerns over this individual continually running the Fiesta Patrias event when there is a concern of ethics or lack thereof by said individual. So much of, so much so that entities and individuals refuse to participate, and members from her previous committees have also claimed and voiced their concerns that there have been checks that have been cashed and funds that were lost, all under her watch. Furthermore, running a separate parade causes much confusion as well as additional disruption to that neighborhood. I don't know what can be done to remedy this, but I am in support of Puto Football being the sole host of El Desfile de la Independencia and offer my assistance voluntarily to making it a successful event for the community in celebration of the diversity that is the Hispanic community in Waukegan. Together, we thrive in unity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carolina. Uh, Elizabeth Delgado, you'll be the last one tonight. You know? Pardon me? Oh, you don't want to? Okay. Well, then, that concludes the audience time. Thank you, Madam Clark. Going on to the consent agenda, um, can I have a first and a second for the consent agenda?
So move.
Okay, so Florian was the first. I need a second.
No, I was the first.
Oh, I'm, okay. Turner and Martinez then. Is that what you said, that you were the first?
I was the first. It was an echo, but you can give it to Lynn. It doesn't matter.
Um, okay, um, any questions to the consent agenda? Okay. Item A, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Item B, a motion to approve a regular payroll dated July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three in a total amount of one million eight hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Item C, a motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, PD, HBB, and CT cash out, final payments, retro pay, dated July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, in a total amount of eighty thousand fifty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. Item D, a motion to approve vendor payments dated August seventh, twenty-three, or twenty twenty-three in the total amount of three million one hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents. No questions to the motion. Roll call, please, Madam Clark.
I do.
Yes.
I don't remember seeing this in board docs, uh, the PPP, the CT cash out, final payouts, and retro pay. I don't remember seeing the invoices for this.
Those are on the payroll, not on the vendor payments. Um, so you would, you would have gotten those.
So this is for payroll?
That's for payroll. The, um, so that is holiday payout, final payments for- The, um, so that is holiday, um, payout, um, final payments for employees that are leaving.
Okay, I did read those. Okay, sorry about that. Sorry for the confusion.
Um, there being no other questions to the, yes?
Um, I just want to clarify, um, the, some of the stuff Mr. Macklemore referenced regarding the furniture and the refrigerator are for, I guess we'll call it our mother's room, breastfeeding room. Well, that's what we were told the furniture was for.
It's right in the next room. It's right in, it's an employee room. Yes. So... We're not, this is not a conversation, Mr. Macklemore, you've had your turn, but it is in the employee room.
Okay.
It's not like it's in my office or anywhere else, it's in the employee room. Um, thank you for clarifying. Um, any other questions to the motion, under the consent agenda? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no reports and communication, our old business, new business. Um, I think rather than omnibus these, enough of them have changed, that I think we'll just go ahead and do them, um, one by one. Can I have a motion for item A? I need a first and a second.
So move.
Okay. Newsom and Florian. Okay, a resolution approving an intergovernment agreement with Waukegan Community Unit School District Sixty for Public Safety Services. This matter was presented to the G O and O, um, Committee on August seventh, twenty twenty-three. And this is a one-year contract, um, starting June thirtieth, I think it is, to July, or, I'm sorry, July first to June thirtieth, I'm saying it backwards. Um, and that is for our SRO officers. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item B, a resolution approving a settlement and, well, first, I'm sorry, I need a first and a second.
I'll make the first.
Turner.
Second.
Second was Martinez. Okay, a resolution approving a settlement and release of all claims for fire department workman's compensation claim number two-two-oh-two-one-six-W-zero-zero-six, for an amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and sixteen cents. This matter was presented to the G, or Government Oversight and Operations Committee on August seventh, twenty twenty-three. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Just give me the first on that one.
Turner. Thank you. Alderman Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, can I have a first and a second on item C?
It was held over in committee.
Yes, that was held over. Okay. September fifth, yeah. Okay. Um, item D, um, can I have a first and a second?
I'll make the first.
Turner, second?
Second.
Bolton? Okay, um, any questions to the motion? Okay, an ordinance approving, uh, zoning calendar twenty-seven-twenty, a conditional use permit for a car wash at six-thirty South Green Bay Road. This matter was heard by the Community Development Committee on August seventh, twenty twenty-three. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Okay, the next item, uh, mayor, I just wanted to let you know, uh, did not receive a motion or a second in committee, which we will interpret that as a negative recommendation. I just wanted the council to be aware.
Okay, so, um, we're going to amend it, so it's saying a resolution to deny, um, the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce for office space? Um, is everyone okay with that?
Can, can we hold it till, um, is Mr. Mike Reed here today to talk about that?
I haven't seen him.
I don't see him.
Nope.
Do you, well, do you want to hold it, or do you want to put it back down to committee for the next meeting?
I mean, it could be on the floor, um, can we hold it on the floor?
I second that. You can hold it to the next meeting.
So that he can, um, give him opportunity to talk about it.
We had opportunity to come tonight. Ray is here.
I second.
He's the director of, um, the chamber, and has been for a couple of years now. And I know at, at one time, uh, under several administrations, the chamber has had a office in City Hall.
There was a first and a second on the hold, so that's all we need. It's gonna be held to the next meeting.
Okay, so that's the August twenty-first meeting? Okay. Okay, can I have a first and a second on item F?
So move.
Okay, Newsom, I need a second.
Second.
Turner?
And then I will just note that this item requires a two-thirds vote of city council.
What, what is that?
Because it's calling for a good faith waiver, exception to the bidding process.
All right, thank you.
Um, a resolution approving change order number two with the Ant Mount Foundation per section two dash four-five-eight-I-seven Goodway Favor, for the youth fire hydrant restoration program for sixteen thousand dollars. This matter was presented in the Community Development Committee on August seventh, twenty twenty-three. Any questions to the motion?
Well, mayor, um, okay, so this is saying it's a good faith waiver, but we heard Brother Blank say earlier, he was also offered this contract, so it sounds like there were other people that were asked about it.
Yes, there were.
Okay.
And, um, you know, his specialty is more construction, um, and so that's how we came to the Ant Mount Foundation, we were looking for youth. Um, there were not other programs at that time, but we now have other programs. I'm sorry, did I say constru, what did I say?
You said our specialty was construction.
I thought you, yeah, for teens, I thought you were working with teens on that.
I, we work with teens on every level, but that's not the reason we declined to offer.
Okay. Um, so, anyway, that's how we came to the Ant Mount Foundation. Now, in the future, there are other options too, that, um, have just recently received funding. And so we will have a couple more, but at the time, we did not have that, um, when it was time to make the choice to put, to employ youth.
Thank you.
And the other thing is that we don't have the ability to do all the supervision, which is what Ant Mount was able to do. So, um, any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Donahworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item G, I need a first and a second?
This will also require a two-thirds vote of city council.
Yep.
So move.
Okay, I'm sorry, I need the motions again. Who was making the first?
Motion.
Uh, Donahworth was first, second?
I'll second.
Bolton, second. And this is for a resolution waiving competitive bidding per section two-four-five-eight-I-dash-seven Good Faith Waiver, for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-four Kia Carnival from Classic Auto Dealer LLC, for an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-six cents. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on August seventh, twenty twenty-three. So I'm sure, because this is out of the police department, did you guys ask all your questions in the committee on this one? Okay.
No, we didn't have, but you just cleared up one, it's for the police department, so.
Okay. Um, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item H was amended in committee, um, and I think we probably just need to bring that back, right?
Well, no, it's, it was, it passed out of committee with an amendment, so the amendment is, the ordinance, as you see it in your packet, is amended now to reflect that the applicant shall pay a fine, uh, before receiving the license.
Do we know what the fine is?
No, you do.
Okay.
Isn't it at the discretion of the liquor commissioner?
Okay.
I think the recommendation was the same fine that was given to another applicant in a similar position.
So seven hundred and fifty?
I think it was seven fifty, yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry, did I get a first and a second on that one? Okay, I need a first?
I'll do a first.
I'll second.
Martinez and, uh, Turner.
Martinez and, I'm sorry?
Turner. Okay, an ordinance increasing the number of Class K I banquet liquor licenses for one, for the salon, Latino Banquet Salon LLC, um, DBA Salon Latino Banquet Hall at ten fifteen Belvedere Street. This matter was presented at the Community Develop, Committee, I'm sorry, on August seventh, twenty twenty-three. And it was amended to, they will receive the liquor license after paying a fine, um, for serving liquor before, when their license was expired. Um, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
He can't go on liquor licenses.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Nay.
Turner.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item I, can I have a first and a second?
First.
I second.
Turner and Bolton.
Who's the second?
Bolton. Item I, an ordinance increasing the number of Class C retail package sales liquor licenses by one for, um, is it Bueller Grand Corp, uh, DBA Grand Liquors at thirteen twenty-eight Grand Avenue. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on August seventh, twenty twenty-three. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Nay.
Turner.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no ordinances, um, closing items, alderman time.
Alderman Donahworth.
Before we start, I will say to staff, um, because alderman time can be quite lengthy, if any of you would like to leave, you may do so at this time. Um, you've had a long day, and I know that, um, so you may go ahead and leave if you'd like. Thank you. Okay, go ahead. Alderman Donahworth.
Yes, I would like to thank everyone who's been calling, and been talking to a lot of people, been able to resolve a lot of things. I've been dealing with the city with a lot of stuff, and they're backing me in whatever I need to do, and things are getting taken care of. And, um, I'm here all the time, so just give me a call, and I can take care of what you need to get taken care of. Thank you.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, so, I had a dumpster a couple weeks ago that was very successful. We filled three dumpsters again, um, in just three hours this time, so. Um, the Eighth Ward likes to get rid of their stuff, so thank you. Um, I know Mr. Garland is gone, but I want to thank Public Works for that wonderful program and the support they give us, the people that come to help, the residents, it's awesome. Um, Touch a Truck was last Friday, one of my favorite events in the city. I didn't get there until it was almost over, but it's just awesome seeing the families and the kids having such a great time, and our community really coming out for, uh, the event. I know Public Works, Police Fire, put a lot of effort into that, so, um, thank you for making that happen. Uh, I think the mayor talked about the meeting on the fourteenth, August fourteenth, we're gonna start discussing what we plan to do with the casino money and the marijuana tax money, um, so hopefully those of you that are interested in that will come to that meeting, it'll be here in City Hall. Um, so, um, hopefully we'll be able to get some good ideas, uh, to utilize that money in a way that'll benefit our community. Um, speaking of money that benefits our community, um, I saw an article written by our own Steve Saden, that Waukegan was recently named one of thirteen locations across Illinois eligible for a five million dollar grant. Um, the money is gonna be used for green energy jobs, which was right up my alley. I just read an article the other day about solar panel recycling is a thing now. Seems like solar panels haven't been around long enough to be recycled, but apparently that's happening, so maybe we can get some jobs doing that way. But, um, anyway, the College of Lake County and the Lake County Workforce Development are two organizations that are exploring different ways to collaborate to obtain the grant, um, and hopefully they get it, and we can look forward to, um, employing people in, uh, the green energy world. Another, um, interesting project I heard about, um, they're looking, the Lake County Coalition for the Homeless, um, is calling out for new projects. On July fifth, HUD released, um, the Fiscal Year Twenty-three Notice of Funding, making approximately three point one billion in funding available to con, communities throughout the Continuum of Care Program, including fifty-two million available in domestic violence bonus projects, so hopefully Safe Place knows about that. Um, and so the Lake County Coalition for the Homeless compiles an application for this funding, which includes funding for permanent and transitional housing, coordinated entry, and the Homeless Management Information System. So we all know we have a homeless issue in this, um, community, so hopefully we can get this information out to the, um, agencies that are eligible to apply for this money, and we can address some of the longstanding issues we have with homelessness in the community. Um, I would like to, um, say that I would love to be involved in, in, uh, organizing the, uh, police accountability, uh, program that Brother Blanks has brought up. I realize I'm, you know, don't want to be on the committee since I'm an alderman, but I would, I would love to be involved in the formation of how that's going to look, so. Um, that's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Hayes.
Pass.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I just want to acknowledge Ray Edwards, uh, for, and congratulate him on receiving a community award that the community, the First Ward, uh, provided to him. It was a very good event. And then, of course, uh, Waukegan is full of activities, the Gospel Fest, we had the, um, JIC had their community block party, and it was no issues, and it was great to see the community and the First Ward come together. And then, just to reiterate the point of the upcoming events, we have August nineteenth, Black Lives Matters, that will be at twenty sixteen Washington Street on the nineteenth. The time is one to five P M. And I believe he, on his flyer, they'll be given by Clyde Macklemore, just wanted to let you know, I'm acknowledging your flyer. Also, on that day, AM, uh, excuse me, Trinity A M E will be getting their landmarking. Uh, and that event will be on South Avenue in Genesee. And they will be, um, their time is from ten, excuse me, from eleven to three, so And there will be, um, their time is from ten, excuse me, from eleven to three, so I plan to be at both events. And I also want to make you aware, uh, in the old, what they call them, the projects or barwell community, every Wednesday, we are providing activities for the youth, and I'm telling you, it's just growing and growing. I really want to welcome you all to come out and help and engage with our youth. And the time that we meet is three o'clock every Wednesday, right there in the community center. And then, following that, um, Xfinity will be passing out next Thursday, school supplies and things like that. That time will be eleven o'clock this coming Thursday. Uh, any future events, make sure you invite me too, I do my best to be there for you. And then, I know quite a few of my constituents have expressed concern about, I don't know if you're aware now, we have no more cable TV, uh, we're not on anymore, so I understand that issue. We are addressing that, right, Mayor?
Um, it is, YouTube is available, but there are places like North Chicago and places that have no other videotaping. So, you will lose complete contact with some of those communities, but you will have YouTube available from us.
Okay, so especially for my senior citizens that aren't able to come out. So, I indicated to them that I wouldn't mention that. That is all that I have for now, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Guzman.
Good evening. Um, I, I, I agree with, um, Alderman Bolton about the cable TV, so there is just nothing else we can do about it, 'cause I do have some senior citizens that just, uh, are not capable of what the YouTube or anything like that, and they really got very comfortable with the, the broadcast, uh, channel.
I mean, we have our legal department looking at it, but, I mean, if they sunset it, there's nothing that we can really do. And a lot of their equipment is now not working anyway, that you have to upgrade. And so, this is all part of their whole upgrade packages and stuff, so there isn't a lot that we can do to control an outside company like that.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. I went, uh, I also want to mention, uh, um, Carmes Carnival over the weekend. It was in the second ward, it was on, uh, Illinois one twenty and, uh, Keller Avenue. Uh, they have it every year, nice place to go to, it's, uh, held by the church, it was a nice event. Also, I want to mention, um, so, I wanted to look into the towing in the city, 'cause, um, you know, the reason why I'm asking is this, is 'cause, uh, you know, my daughter's boyfriend got, uh, into an accident, and it was six hundred and twenty-five dollars to tow for, I think it was like five minutes away, for two hours. So, I was like, oh, you know what, let me start looking into the city towing. So, what does that have to do with the city, uh, how are we dealing with that so we're not being over, uh, charging our residents or anything, or anybody getting into accidents, or getting, um...
Well, one, I'm not gonna do discussion time, 'cause this is Alder time, but, um, you can come in and ask us, and we'll give you all that information of what they charge and the whole nine yards, 'cause there are certain rules with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um... Black, I, I do want to mention the Black Expo, uh, Black Lives Matter, August nineteenth, I received a brochure, one to five P M. And it's at Botrin, uh, Bowling Alley in Washington Street in Waukegan. Hopefully, uh, people can attend and make this a, a big thing to make our community united for all of us. I wanted to also mention with, uh, Brother Blanks has mentioned multiple, multiple, multiple times about, uh, police accountability. I understand, I read the email that we're not as big as Chicago, New York, or anything like that, but we still are a huge community. And, uh... Hopefully, we could do something about this, and, you know, because it does have to be accountable. I mean, you know, 'cause I see some, I mean, people are policing the police. And going off with, time off without, with pay and stuff like that, I don't agree with that, but I don't know if that's in union contracts or not, but I would like to see a different board on that to look into it. I think that's about it, thank you very much.
Alderman Martinez.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, before I, I begin, I would like to give my sincere thanks to Pastor Doug Carlson for the beautiful invocation he gave tonight. Uh, the prayer was beautiful for our city and our citizens at a time when it is really needed in our city. I'm gonna make this short, but just a reminder that we will be having our, our third, our ward, third ward cleanup, disposal, and dump, dumpster drop off, that is going to be held on Saturday, the nineteenth, from eight A M. to twelve P M. Um, and this is actually per the, per, per the residence request in the third ward, they wanted, uh, something done in the, uh, weekend, so I was able to get that, uh, done. Uh, I appreciate everybody's effort. Uh, it will be located at Weiss Field or one hundred North Lewis Avenue. I welcome everyone from the community, not only the third ward, but everyone to take advantage of it. Uh, please feel, please refer to the flyers, uh, as you can see, these flyers are both in Spanish and English, I think they did a great job. I do want to thank Dave Motley for his help, for, uh, he's very persistent, he was quick, he got on it. Also, I'd like to thank Jane, uh, Jane, and also, uh, the Public Works Department, and also George Bridges for collaborating together. They were able to, they guided me and steered me and, um, get this thing up and running, so I appreciate that, thank you so much. Now, I also want to make sure that everyone knows that there are some items that we cannot accept. So, please look at it, and please, um, hopefully we'll see everybody there, and that, this is for the whole city of Waukegan. So, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna go ahead and translate this in Spanish. Uh, for those who, uh, want me to translate, uh, just to say, vamos a tener un colección y disposible de basura sábado el diecinueve de agosto, desde las ocho de las doce de la tarde. Uh, por favor, revisa los artículos que no aceptamos. Si tiene preguntas, me puede llamar a mi número de teléfono, el número de teléfono es ocho cuatro siete tres nueve cero, uh, dos seis ocho y nueve. All right, and then also, like the mayor had mentioned earlier, the school begins, I just ask everyone, please be very, very careful, be very mindful, watch the kiddies as, uh, kiddos as they go to school, watch your speed, and most importantly, please always exercise caution. Finally, I've been getting complaints from the business owners with excessive loitering from the businesses on Grand Avenue, located, uh, on Grand and, and that whole particular area there. I have addressed this issue and working with the business owners and with the Chief Navarro to find a solution to this ongoing problem. Um, I have spoken to the many of the homeless people and continue to offer them resources and empowerment. I am surprised that many of them are not from Waukegan. Um, but, uh, in any case, I, I am working on it, and I, and I just ask for your due diligence to get something done to work, to collaborate with the mayor, hopefully we can come up with something, and that's, it's gonna take a community, like you say, it takes a village, but I also would like the help of also, uh, Pads Home and Shelter. Um, it is a problem, and I, I witnessed it for myself, so for those business owners, thank you so much for bringing it to my attention, and I will do my very best to try to curb this, or try to do, to work with, uh, with the agencies and, and, uh, with the, with the resources we have here to try to, uh, bring that down. But, in any case, uh, if anyone needs to get ahold of me, you can reach me at eight four seven three nine zero two six nine zero, and that is all I have, but before I go, I also want to make sure that everyone goes to the Black, Black Lives Matter Expo on the nineteenth, Clyde Macklemore, um, I will be there, I've been there a couple of times, and I say it is an amazing event. I welcome everyone to be there, and let's all represent the city of Waukegan, right? Let's all represent and, and, and help each other out, because this is all about. It takes, we are the fabric of Waukegan, you know, we have to put our differences aside, you know, and really look at the bigger picture of what's really going on, and hopefully we can all come to some logical resolution, you know, to what we're experiencing here in Waukegan. But, that's all I got, just remember, be mindful, be safe, but most of all, it's all be a good neighbor. Good night.
Alderman Felix.
Thank you, everyone. I just wanted to mention a few things that happened this past week. Um, uh, on last Tuesday, I want to give a big thanks to, um, Gloria Pruitt and Waukegan Township as well, and La Canoa Restaurant, we, uh, took about, we were planning for forty kids to take them to the movies, we ended up with about twenty kids. We, uh, we got, we took them on the bus to watch a movie, uh, and it was all organized because of, you know, Gloria Pruitt, uh, Mike Morales, and they helped out along with myself to take these kids to, um, to the movies, and these guys, these kids were from the Julian Towers. Um, everyone worked well, uh, it was, um, I would say it was success, you know, it was, it was a good, good movie to watch, and just have them out there right before school started, something we wanted to do for the kids. And it, uh, it's one of many, but, uh, it was a good experience, uh, taking the kids out there. Uh, also, this past Thursday, we had, uh, which I'm a part of, Community Outreach Waukegan, and we had a gala, it was, uh, really fun. It was a lot, we had a lot of people come out and support the organization. Community Outreach Waukegan, um, we, we have a, um, a youth group that's now creating their own events. Uh, we're, we're talking about cleanups in the alleys, we're talking about, uh, art galleries, a whole bunch of, uh, you know, things that we are doing in the community, and it for, and it, uh, lets the kids, uh, give the opportunity for them to take advantage, uh, and become a leader themselves and organize something, so just want to big, give a big shout out to Community Outreach Waukegan, and the gala was also a success, thank you for everyone that joined. Um, also, one thing that I did want to mention, as I'm driving down Washington sometimes, and I had to bring it up to, uh, to the, uh, Chief of Staff, and also, you know, there's parts of, uh, the city property that are not well-maintained, you see the weeds growing and whatnot, so, I'm doing my best to address that in, 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 in the fourth ward, because, um, you know, if it's our responsibility, we should be taking care of it, so, and, and Chief did, uh, did, we did have a conversation, he's, he's gonna work on it as well. But if you guys see certain areas, please let me know, that way I can go take a look at it, take pictures, and then forward it to the, uh, Waukegan staff. Uh, you know, I do, I do, well, I do want to say something that in terms of, you know, when we're out here, we're, we're calling people out, and I honestly don't think that's, that's the right thing to do, work well with each other, that's the best thing. I will say that, um, uh, for people that call me out, they don't ever call me on the phone, so let, let's just, you know, as long as we have good communication... No, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking about Ray Ray. As long as we have good communication, then we can move forward, but all we can do is just shout out these nonsense, and it doesn't get us anywhere. So, um, I just want to say, if people do, do, they actually do want to move forward, reach out to me, and I'm, you know, willing to work with you guys, and, uh, and do something that we can actually impact the community. Uh, and that's all for me, thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, uh, one item, um, the fifth ward is gonna be having their clean sweep. Disposal dumpster will be at, uh, Greenwood in Delaware, it's gonna be Saturday, Aug- August the twenty-sixth, from eight A M. to twelve noon. And I just want to make sure everyone is aware that this is free, bring anything you would like other than what is listed on the flyers, such as yard waste, liquids, trunks, tree trunks, flammable materials, and things of that nature. Uh, if you have any questions regarding this, please give me a call at eight four seven three nine zero two six nine one, and we will also be taking electronics and tires, but the tires must be off of the rim. Again, my number is eight four seven three nine zero two six nine one, thank you, have a good night.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, there's been some talk, again, about establishing the Citizens Police Accountability, uh, Panel, uh, but no talk at all about establishing a Alderman's Committee on Public Safety, and we never seem to talk about public safety except in passing, and I'd like to reiterate my request, it'll be the sixth time that I've asked for such a committee to be created. Uh, number two, uh, Commissioner, Alderman Felix kind of alluded to this, you know, just, it just occurred to me again, I want to speak to it. If you have questions and you expect back and forth dialogue, you want to talk about something, you call the Alderman, call the mayor's office, call the Chief of Staff, that's where you're gonna get the conversation. When you come here, you know it, you guys, everybody's been doing it for years now, you don't get conversation when you're at the podium. But if you want conversation, and of course, I'm always available to everyone, anyone, regardless. There's been a spate of, we, we continue to have a problem with, um, automobile burglaries, and more recently, it seems to me, there is an increase in automobile thefts. I want to remind people, most of these car burglaries, they're not breaking windows, most of them, sometimes they are. But, uh, most of them is, is, uh, they're just flipping handles, and your car's open and they go in. They came in my yard, went in my, in my garage, went in my wife's car, went in my truck, they hit six other people in my block. So, just reminder, lock your cars up, be mindful, don't leave, uh, valuable items in your car. Okay, let me see, I only got so many boxes here. Sheridan Road, so recently, you know, in the last eighteen months or so, we had, I think, ten accidents along Sheridan Road, and the sixth ward particularly between Greenwood, uh, I'm sorry, Glen Flora and, uh, Franklin Street. Equally, you know, about five on each side, excuse me, but many, we had several deaths. So, uh, met with Chief Navarro, Deputy Chief Chastain, uh, had conversation with Director Garland and the Chiefs, and anyway, we finally came up with a plan, we did some, implemented some, um, devices that we hope will mitigate those, uh, accidents. We're, we're having so many, one, we put in a, a slow caution curve ahead sign, a reflective sign with a light. We also put in reflective arrows in the curve. I talked with the Waukegan School District, I got them to start parking their buses, that they would park along the north fence, um, and the reflectors on those buses were causing an optical illusion that the road was straight, so I got them to move those buses. Uh, we have a couple of additional things, Waukegan School District is gonna chop some trees down, their trees, um, that were creating, again, lending itself to that optical illusion and, and creating a dark patch. Uh, we'll be adding a streetlight down there, so hopefully that'll mitigate some of those accidents. And I want to thank, uh, the Chief, Deputy Chief, and Director Garland for their input in getting things done. Speaking of, uh, Lincoln Center, I have a question, I would like to know the status, and I, I can make the call, but I just don't want us to lose sight of the fact that that wall was to be taken down, and it's been there for, and it's damaged condition for well over a year, we need action on that, that's a code violation in itself, and I'd like to have action, but if you want, I'll go ahead and reach out to them again. Um, tomorrow at one P M. at the corner of Glen Flora, excuse me, Glen Flora and Hickory Street, we are going to install an, um, honorary street sign in honor of Alderman Tempest, and again, this is, and we've talked about this forever, uh, I think it's been eighteen, took eighteen months to get this done. Um, but, uh, we will install a street sign at Glen Flora, and then each intersection between Glen Flora and Greenwood, that's a total of several, seven intersections, we'll get a street sign honoring Alderman Tempest. Two are already in place at Grove and one at, uh, Pacific, so. Okay, let's see, I, uh, my fourteenth annual ice cream social will be held, uh, September ninth. Normally it's in, in August, but this year, for logistical reasons, we're holding it on September ninth from two to five P M. at the corner of Genesee and Quarry. And last but not least... Hmm, there was something else, and I've forgotten what it is, I guess I'll have to come back to it next time. Thank you all very much, have a good night.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Uh, Florian first, second.
Donaworth.
Hayes. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Me, I oppose that, I don't want to quit.
Stay then, gentlemen.